We'll call this meeting the December meeting of the Russell City Council to order. We'll be led in our invitation by Brother Howard Kaiser and follow that with a pledge to the flag if you would please stand.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you, be seated please. Madam Clerk, do you think we've got enough for our forum? Shall we call the roll?
Mr. Stuber?
Present.
Mr. Holman?
Present.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Present.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Present.
Mr. Wiley?
Here.
Mr. Eaton?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Westcott?
Here.
All present.
Excellent. Counsel, you should have in your packet the minutes from November 17th and the special called meeting on November 29th. There's no corrections or questions about that, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Have we got a motion, Mr. Westcott, second Mr. Wiley? All in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. McCoyn, finance report.
Finance report, counsel. For November, general fund revenues nine hundred and eighty-three thousand three eighty-three, three point one six above our year-to-date projection. Sales tax receipts were seven hundred ninety-seven thousand two seventy-eight. Franchise infirmment fees were forty-nine thousand nine twenty-seven. General fund expenditures were nine hundred and thirty-five thousand six twenty, four point four five percent below our year-to-date projection. We've receiveded four hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars more receiveded than expended. Street fund revenues for November, three hundred and fifty-five thousand five seventy, three point three one percent above our projection. Sales tax receipts were two hundred and fifty thousand two twelve. New half-cent sales tax, forty-nine thousand one oh three. Street fund operations were four hundred and thirty-four thousand seven thirty-six, seven point eight percent below year-to-date projections. Sales tax improvements was a hundred and one thousand three eighteen for overlay and some work on Reson Lane. And capital, we spent three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Economic development, sixty-three thousand two seventy-seven, fifty-eight thousand one sixty for the new sales tax, five thousand one sixty-one for interest. Expenditures were thirteen thousand eighty-six for Garver and Walker Collaborative. Capital assets receiveded four hundred and forty-one thousand four fifty, four twenty-one seven seventy of new sales tax. Airport was fourteen thousand four seventy grant, interest five thousand two hundred and three. Expenditures, one million eight hundred and fifty-four thousand nine sixty-three to Citicorp, the building R and M, Aquatic Center, fire station, airport, and parks. Anyone have any questions?
All right, if there are no questions, thank you, Mr. McCoyn.
Thank you.
Okay, for my report, first I'd like to recognize Boy Scout Troop Two Ten in attendance tonight. Mr. Stratton, could I prevail on you to step to that microphone and tell us about the merit badge they're working on? Would you do that? Or, or the scoutmaster, either one?
Yeah, I'm not.
I, I got vague details, but I hear we're working on a merit badge?
Yes, sir. The boys are working on their citizenship merit badge, and one of the requirements is to attend a city council meeting and then discuss an issue that maybe was discussed and have different opinions, and then they have to decide which side they agree with and explain it to their counselor. So that's why we're here tonight.
That's excellent, thank you very much. Then the next thing, Mr. Bob Burris, if you would join me, yeah, let's give it in the Mr. Bob Burris, if you'll meet me at the podium. Mr. Burris is a long-serving member of the Russell Airport Commission, his term is expiring the end of this month, and so the commission asked us to get this plaque, it says, "Presented to Bob Burris in grateful appreciation for your ten years of service on the Russell Airport Commission, 2007 to 2016." Does not mention on there that you've been chair for like, almost all of that ten years, is that right? For a long time?
Okay.
Bob, thank you very much for your service. Appreciate it.[350.12][350.12](applause) We'll have to start the first of the year out with some new members on boards and commissions. First, we'll go with the Civil Service Commission. We added a couple of positions, if you'll remember. We've had a couple of different, we've had several different names nominated. We're going to recommend Ray Watkins and Jimmy Horton. And I think we spell our last name the same, we may be related through mom's side of the family, but it's way back. He didn't get on it because he knows me, I can tell you that. That was probably a hindrance, but we asked the council to, to approve Mr. Watkins and Mr. Horton, if you would.
Motion.
Second.
Got a motion, Ms. Harris, and a second, Mr. Wiley. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Airport actually has three positions that we need to fill. We're recommending that we reappoint Les Taft to another five-year term, that we add Bill West for a five-year term, and Kevin Burnham, he will fill the remainder of Mr. Phil Carruth's term. I think that was probably four years remaining on that. We asked for the council to bless those nominations. Motion to approve. Okay, so we got the motion, how do we go, motion, Mr. Westcott, and second, Mr. Wiley. I think we came in at the same time. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item three, we're going to recognize the Russell High School Cyclones, state champions in football this year. I don't know what came over me, I know some of y'all were down there too. We went down for the game, sat there in the rain. There was one time there, maybe early in the second half, it looked like I'm going to be sorry I'm sitting here soaking wet and cold, but they pulled it out. And so, their congratulations to them. Their plans are ongoing for maybe a parade and to honor before one of the basketball games. It's quite an accomplishment, and just me personally, I'll, the coach came to Lions Club a couple of weeks ago and spoke. I think a lot of y'all have heard Coach Dawson speak, but this time he was talking about the family atmosphere they cultivate for the team, and once you know that, it makes it that much more special. Mr. Wiley?
A and P today, we voted to put a banner, a billboard on each end of the Russellville, on, coming in each side of Russellville.
Great.
We're going to put a billboard up, we're paying for it, our A and P money, for eight months, recognizing Russellville as champions.
Beautiful, good. Congratulations, Russell High School Cyclones. Very well, very well deserved. While we're nominating, Mr. Wiley, you told me before the meeting that you guys have a member that needs to be reappointed, do you want to do it?
Yeah, Mr. Riley.
Yeah, Tyler Riley.
Tyler Riley.
He's actually chair this time.
Yeah, but he won't be chair next year, but he wants to stay on.
He won't be chair, but he would like to do another two, three years.
They do five years?
Oh, I love that.
Four years.
They're the full term. He's been a very, very active and dependable member of the A and P Commission, and so we asked the council's confirmation to reappoint Tyler Riley.
I'll make that motion.
Got a while, a motion, Mr. Wiley?
Second.
And a second, Mr. Westcott, or Mr. Harris, did you get in there?
Yeah.
Let's put your name on the record. Mr. Harris beat you on that one. Is there any discussion? All right, in that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you very much. Ms. Palladino, are you ready? Can you help me out here a little bit? I'll just, we'll just keep our seats and let you go down the way. Usually we do this at the very end of the meeting, but then it kind of gets covered up. Julie's got some plaques to hand out to three of your members. This will be their last meeting, you want to go ahead and give them?
Yeah. Mr. Eaton.
Hmm.
Mr. Holland. Ms. Freddie Harris. Tene.
Tene is getting warm.
Mr. Garland Stuber?
No, no, no. You can't go where you're going.
I got to give a speech when I, they give me knives.
I can tell you, everybody that serves on this council sacrifices for their entire term on here. You go home at night, you stay awake, and you worry about your decisions, so if y'all don't mind, can we give all of these people, including the ones that are coming back, a hand?[737.82][737.82](applause) Got a call, I guess Tuesday of this week, and was told that we have a, an extra special award here from the Municipal League, and Don Zimmerman had a previous engagement, so our good friend Tracy Klein-Pew is going to present this, if you would.
Sorry. I was extremely pleased when Don Zimmerman asked me to present this award to Bill Eaton tonight. As most of you know, during my tenure with the city of Russellville, I was fortunate enough to get to work with Mr. Eaton. I know Mr. Eaton as a man of service. He served his country, he's served his state with the Arkansas Municipal League, and he served his city both as mayor and alderman, as well as his community and his family. There are so many positive things that I can say about Bill Eaton, but the words that always spring to mind are principle and integrity. So I am pleased tonight to present Bill Eaton with an honorary life membership to the Arkansas Municipal League. The inscription on the plaque reads, "In grateful recognition of devotion to the people and outstanding public service rendered through the municipal governments of the state of Arkansas." Congratulations.[846.73][846.73](applause)
Yeah, a lot of time.
Why don't they give you one?
Huh? Give me one. I got a little black at the house for serving.
All right, one last, while we're still on that, Mr. Eaton told me I was going to be in trouble for this, but I see Mrs. Eaton in the back, and I'd be even more trouble there if I didn't mention that, is it tomorrow? I know tomorrow is the celebration, fifty years of wedded bliss for Mr. and Mrs. Bill Eaton, Bill and Sharon, so.[895.23][895.23](applause) Is that all I had on my notes?
In fact, Mr. Mayor, you're going to have to allow me one thing.
Is he going to sing? Are you going to sing?
He's going to ask her to marry him again.[916.41][916.41](laughing)
Wow.[918.41][918.41](applause)
I guess we could give him demerits for that little public display of affection, but
what's the point now, so, congratulations. All right, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready, that brings us back to the Finance Committee report.
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Wipe off that lipstick, get us back on track.
There was, there was a time, fifty, a little over fifty years ago, where that lipstick had a particular flavor.[978.16][978.16](laughing) Anyway, let me gather my thoughts. Thank you all very much for allowing me that discretionary moment there. The Finance Committee met on last Tuesday, December the sixth, and we had a number of items on our agenda at that time. I'm going to ask that we consider items two through, I believe it is, eight. Yes, two through eight, at one time, those were appropriations for various things that had to be done, and I make that in the form of a motion for items two through eight at this time, Mr. Mayor.
All right, counsel, you heard the motion, if there are no questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
All right, going back to item one, consideration of a resolution amending the Fire Pension Fund Special Budget. I took that separately, there was some question last time in regard to that, but I still have that as an item that we passed and make that in the form of a recommendation at this time, Mr. Mayor, if there's anyone that has any question about that.
All right, counsel, you heard the motion, are there any questions? In that case, that is recommended by the Finance Committee in the form of a motion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, earlier this evening, we had several items on our agenda for the Finance Committee, and items, I'm going to recommend in the form of a motion, various appropriations for items two through seven, for approval in the form of a motion at this time.
Okay, that's two through seven, all the appropriations recommended in the form of a motion, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item number one was a resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk treasurer to enter into an agreement and the purchase of right-of-way for a street that will stretch from Highway Seven to the new Convention Center property. And that was approved by the Finance Committee, and I proposed that as, in the form of a motion at this time.
Okay, counsel, you heard the motion, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Holman?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
No.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
No.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have the last item, which was a discussion regarding Habitat Property. We had that discussion, and it is our understanding that the Habitat people are satisfied with the proposal to accept this lot from the, from the city, and as my understanding, City Attorney Smith will move forward with the action that is required to convey that property. Otherwise, we have no other business, Mr. Mayor.
Just a reminder, that deal was, if y'all remember, we passed that to sell it for a thousand dollars, and it was going to give time, we were going to give like thirty days for the community to volunteer, donate, or whatever, and before he got out that door, he had his thousand dollars, the local, one of the local banks agreed to pay that thousand dollars, so I just thought I'd share that because it's.
So you didn't get to play your given?
Uh, no. Well, we're still working that part out, but, but really, I want the bank to give credit, that was, to me, it confirms that the community approves of what you guys do, so I thought I'd share that with you. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
No, sir.
Chairman Stuber, I'm going to call on you one more time.
Mayor, I have nothing to report. I wish I had a long report tonight.
I wish you could drag this out.
But anyway, I thank you.
Thank you for serving, appreciate that. See where that gets us to? No department report tonight, we have no unfinished old business, so new business one is discussion of official name for the Aquatic Center, sponsored by Parks and Recreation, I believe Commissioner Hinesman, did you come to speak on that tonight, or you just here in case questions come up? Mac, do you want to tell us what your?
The Parks Commission, you know, we, it's my job to temporarily name a park, and the name for the Russell Aquatic Center is, pretty much was a temporary name, and we went through our park naming policy because we're trying to put together brochures and advertising and everything for it, and we went through the policy the way it should have been done with the committee studying it. We had a sixty-day period for everything, for names to be submitted, and they brought it back, and the Parks Committee recommended to the commission the Russell Aquatic Center. We think that's the best way to, for the advertising for brochures and everything else, and so the Parks Commission voted unanimously for that. They're recommending to y'all that we officially name it the Russell Aquatic Center.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we follow the commission's guidelines in regard to that and name the new facility, the Russell Aquatic Center, at this time.
Second, Mr. Stuber? All right, any discussion? In that case, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you, and if any of y'all would like to go through it, please give me a call.
Oh, man.
Councilman Brown went through it the other day, and answered a lot of questions, so I'll be glad to walk through it with any one of you.
I highly recommend, if you have not been out there. It's nice. That you go, it's going to be a spectacular facility. The other day, they had, all of the concrete slab is done inside except the entryway, and so we kind of had kicked around this idea. Today I went by and they were putting in the frames for the glass, glass should go in right at the first of the year. They're adding gravel when they get room and when they get time so that it can be getting packed. If they get all of that done, there's no way weather can stop that project, it's going to move along at basically the pace it's going now, which, Mr. Brown, what do you think?
I think we're, we're going to be ahead of schedule there. Everybody needs to go take a look at it.
Well, I was going to suggest, and see what you guys thought, we've kicked this around, and up until now, there's been some logistical problems and safety concerns, but with that slab out there, we were thinking maybe when they get sealed up, or we don't freeze to death, maybe do a, like a finance meeting, our financing agenda prep night next month out there, and give everybody a good chance to go see it. It's, I mean, I think it looks great from the road, but the first time I got under there after they had the decking on, it's, it's pretty awesome. So something you guys are all going to be very proud of. Thank you, Mr. Hollis. New business two, considering an ordinance, repealing ordinance fifteen oh three, adopting the police department, we're going to repeal the police, Chief Humphrey, you here? Why don't you get up and explain this?
We need to make a motion before he does that.
You want to do that?
Yeah.
Second.
I make a motion, suspend the rule, read title only with short explanation.
Second. So we got, well, let's vote on that first. We got a motion to suspend the rules and read one time by title only and a second by Mr. Eaton. All in favor of the motion to suspend, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Make a motion to adopt.
Got to read it first.
Yeah, let Mr. Smith read it.
An orange peel and orange number fifteen oh three, which adopted the Russell, the Russell Police Department Rules and Regulations for the Russell Police Department and the City of Russell, Arkansas, and if the other purpose is this ordinance would just repeal ordinance number fifteen oh three, which adopted the current rules and regulations for RPD.
I make a motion to adopt.
Second. So we got a motion and a second. Chief, now you want to tell us what we're doing?
Now, may I speak?
Just, if you would, just explain why we're doing this, because it reads a little funny.
Trey, if I misspeak, correct me.
Okay.
State law requires that the governing body of the city approve all policies that a department head makes. That manual has about sixty-six policies in it. It's taken us two years to revise this manual from the one we did in 2008, and it's not been adopted by the city council, so we're asking that it be adopted by the city council to be legal. And Trey, is that pretty much it?
Pretty much, and state law's open-ended on how it's done, so to save future costs and future adoptions, just switching it from ordinance to resolution adoption form.
I think that ordinance is a nineteen ninety-five ordinance that adopted our last policy manual, so.
Correct.
Some things changed since then.
Few things.
Okay, is there any questions? You want to call the roll?
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Holman?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that'll bring us to item three, this is a resolution adopting the Russell Police Department Rules and Regulations.
Motion. Second.
Okay. Motion, Mr. Wiley and second, Mr. Eaton. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, consideration of a resolution expressing the willingness of the city of Russell to partner with the highway department. If that sounds familiar, we approved that, was it last month or month before?
Month before.
So we sent it all to the highway department, and they sit back and they said, no, your resolution should read like this, and that's what we're looking at tonight, even though the resolution we voted on before, they had sent us a sample of what they wanted then, but for a little housekeeping, if you would consider that.
Motion.
Second. Okay, we got a motion, Mr. Wiley, second, Mr. Westcott. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, item five, is consideration of a resolution to set a public hearing, this is for a vacation right-of-way at West Fourth Street between Quanah and South Phoenix.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, Mr. Eaton, second, Mrs. Harris. Is there any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item six, consideration of an ordinance rezoning property, City of Russellville located at six-ten Lockin Dam Road.
Make a motion to suspend, read title only with short explanation.
Second.
Okay, we vote on the motion to suspend. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Mr. Smith?
An ordinance rezonance certain realty in the City of Russellville, Arkansas, and for other purposes, this ordinance if passed would rezone property located at six-ten Lockin Dam Road, currently M-one to C-two.
Motion.
Okay, we got a motion, Mr. Wiley, and a second. Was that, uh, Mr. Brown?
Mr. Brown.
Okay. Any discussion on that? In that case, all in favor, well, we gotta call the roll on that too.
Mr. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Ms. Freddie Harris? Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Holman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all. Item seven is consideration of a discussion of the distribution and cultivating marijuana within city limits. Uh, Mr. Eaton?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Do you sponsor this?
We, uh, we had some discussion in regard to this, uh, back last week, uh, when I asked to have this put on the agenda. And it is there. I would like for it to remain on the agenda with consideration about how we deal, uh, with this. As I'm sure most people know, we've had a, uh, commission, a state commission, uh, appointed to deal with this and they're trying to come up with rules and regulations within the state, uh, and how that, uh, will be handled. There, they have a shortened window to deal with this. And oftentimes, whenever you have, uh, something of that nature, uh, it doesn't always come out right when you have to come up with the rules on something of this nature in such a brief period of time. My interest in this is simply to get this before the council for consideration in the near future on what, if anything, uh, we should do on dealing, uh, with this particular issue, which I, in my own personal opinion, and that's what I'm expressing here, will be just a step that will, uh, lead to, uh, the approval of recreational marijuana at some point in time. And I think it's something that we, as a city, uh, whether we take it to the voters, and I think that's probably what will have to be done on how to deal with this. I think it is vitally important to us when we read about and hear about the issues that are taking place in other states out west, uh, who are, uh, having to, to deal with this sort of thing. So that's the reason that is there this time. Thank you.
Can I, can I just add?
Mr. Harris, please.
You know, this, this is new laws, Mr. Eaton, proposed, and they're still trying to get their arms around how this is gonna play out in Arkansas the next few years. But once those decisions are made, I think you're gonna see things happening very fast because there are entrepreneurs out there who are ready to go. And so rather than the tail wag the dog, I would suggest that the dog wag the tail and that Russell, uh, the community of Russell decide where they stand on this position and they get ahead of it. Otherwise, there will be a distribution center put in the middle of Russellville and then the citizens won't have an opportunity to complain or accept. So if we'll get ahead of it and decide where the City of Russell stands on the issue, then it's sure gonna make things a lot smoother, uh, once things start moving. Believe me, they will start moving fast once the rules are in place.
Thank you. Anybody else want to comment? Mr. Smith, do you wanna give us a preview of what to expect, or is it, do you still need to see what they do, or how do you, what do you, where do you wanna go?
There's limitations in what a city can do. There's a prohibition of city prohibiting it unless there's an election by the people. So, I mean, it can be passed by the council, but it's gonna have to be voted on by the people before any prohibition's permanent. And there's also a pretty clear zoning prohibition, which you cannot single them out and basically zone them out. They have to be treated the same as a licensed pharmaceutical, uh, retail place. So there are some, uh, safeguards in that, that they have to be met before a prohibition can be made by the city.
Okay. All right, something to look forward to moving forward. Thank you all. Uh, item eight is, uh, I think we've all known this was coming. Uh, Mr. Smith and myself, uh, the market president for Centennial Bank, Bank's legal counsel, um, and Steve Malick from City Corp had a meeting, uh, last week with David Hunt, the developer for the convention center. I think we've all known he was gonna need an extension of time. The results of that meeting, uh, his financing is approved, um, but he has, he's in the middle of a hotel project in Jonesboro. The lender is requiring him to reach seventy-five percent completion on that before he can close on and access the money from this loan. He told us at that meeting he was between fifty and fifty-five percent complete and he expects to be seventy-five percent complete by the first of March. And then he said that he, he asked for an extension until March of twenty eighteen. He thought it would take twelve months to build it. I think that would be maybe doable if nothing at all went wrong, weather or anything else. And so we went back and forth and thought, you know, the last thing we want is to come back and ask for another extension later on. So what we're asking at this point is for the council to amend the agreement till September of twenty eighteen. Is that right?
Yeah. No, March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen. Eighteen months. Or did you want two years?
I thought it was eighteen months from, from March. I thought, we figured for March of this year, well...
I thought it was eighteen from August.
Well, he'll, he's, he'll start the first of, well, he'll have a running start the first of March. He's gonna pay you out of his pocket for some groundwork that he could do. But then, uh, I mean, that, March of twenty eighteen is what he asked for. But I thought maybe we'd wanna build in a little bit of a window in case you get bad weather or supply issues or something else.
Mr. Mayor, why, why is it necessary to extend his agreement at this point in time?
Well, I mean, I think his contract date was, was August of next year and it's obvious he can't get that. He's gonna have to have some kind of an extension and that's what the discussion last week was about, was, you know, what would be a reasonable extension. He thinks he can build it in twelve months from the time he starts because his, his dirt work, uh, they're actually gonna be working on that between now and March. He can get up to the point, he cannot pour footings until he closes on his loan. That, that's an awful lot of work that could be done before then. But there's no way he's gonna get it done by August of next year.
Of course, uh, you know, the city council, at a meeting on August the fifth, twenty fourteen, passed a resol- resolution to sign an agreement with David Hunt to build a motel and convention center. That, that resolution clearly says that he's to, uh, commence work on the development within a hundred and twenty days of signing of that resolution. And it gives him, it gives him three years to complete the project. Of course, in my unprofessional opinion, Hunt was out of compliance with that agreement twenty-four, took two years and one month ago. He was out of compliance with that agreement, 'cause as of yet, he hadn't started anything. You know, at a city council meeting on October the fifteenth of twenty fifteen, it says in, in, in a paragraph here, David Hunt, update on convention center. Hope to start excavation within the next few months and pour any footings late spring and early summer. That time has, has come and gone, okay? As late as a few months ago, there, there was talk about having a special meeting to approve David Hunt's plan so he could get started on the project. That never happened. You know, at the same time that he's supposed to be, be working on the convention center and hotel out there, a, a release from Jonesboro, it starts reading, "A joint, John, Jonesboro based real estate firm announced this week they are working with a Tennessee-based company to bring a five-story, one-hundred-and-six-room hotel to Jonesboro." And it goes on down here and it says, and it identifies that person as, as David Hunt of Hunt Properties. Okay? And, and his timeframe, it says in this same release that his timeframe is to, to, to begin construction in the fall of twenty fifteen. That's in Jonesboro. And, and his opening, his projected open date is summer of twenty sixteen. That's past. You know, it, you said he's fifty-five percent complete and he, they're already supposed to be living in the place. You know, and, and what makes this Jonesboro thing so bad in, I mean, what the importance of Jonesboro is, he had already signed a lease agreement with the City of Russellville when he went down there obviously and made that deal and put us on the back burner. You know, uh... You know, the City of Russellville still does not have one-hundred percent plans. You know, they've got what he calls ninety percent plans, but I kinda looked at them a little bit myself and I'm no, no authority, but, 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 um, you know, you gotta stretch it to get ninety percent out of them, in, uh, in my opinion. And, and, you know, based on Mr. Hunt's past construction experience in Russellville, which is well documented, and the fact that he's still in litigation on the last project that, that he built in Russellville, you know, I think, I think the city should, should think long and hard before we extend an agreement with him. Because, you know, all through this thing, it, it's been, we're gonna start now, we don't start. We're gonna, we're gonna start, start next month or, or two, two months from now, we're gonna start in the spring, we're gonna start in, but, but before fall gets here, where we can get footings out of the ground before winter. And, and he's still not starting. He's working in Jonesboro on a project that he started, that he obviously made a deal for after he signed up here. Thank you.
Anybody else want to comment?
Well, I think we should wait at least until March and we hear from the bank and there the letter of intent or something that he has, has a, a loan guarantee and ready to start. So, and his agreement with us doesn't end until August, so I think we should at least wait until, uh, he gets a letter to us of, of good intentions with the bank.
Do you remember them talking about that at all, Mr. Smith? I, I thought I heard somewhere that, that they need the extension before they can, before they finalize their deal, but...
Well, even that in writing, 'cause right now, all we've had is talk. I agree with Mr. Stuber on that. We've had a lot of talk.
I agree with you on that, but this time, uh, the, the banker and the bank's lawyer were there and they, uh, you know, I felt pretty sure that they're on top of it. We even, back to, you know, Mr. Stuber was talking about some construction issues he had on another project here, but that project did not have a payment performance bond, which we required in our contract and the bank was adamant that they're gonna expect that to be executed too. So if we ever get started on construction, we've got, we've got a safeguard that your typical commercial deal does not have. Is that a fair way to say that?
It is on, on that, yes.
I would think I would, I'd like to make a motion that, that this issue be tabled until, you know, I, I look, I look at that, I don't think there's any bankers or Mr. Hunt's in the audience tonight to converse with this on what, what the rules of engagement are going forward. So I would, I would make a motion to table this until next month and then someone be here with some authority who can explain to the council what we're dealing with in relation to this issue. And then if they can't be here then, then maybe we need to wait until March when Mr. Hunt is ready to start construction and then we can talk about the extension. So that would be my motion.
That last sentence was, now, I agree with that a hundred percent. Just let this agreement alone and, and when he's, when he's ready to start, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, and, and I'm no attorney, but as far as I'm concerned, he breached that agreement back two years ago. I mean, so, so it's my belief today, he has no agreement. Now, you know, and, and, and if, if time moves on, Mr., Mr., Mr. Hunt has went two years without an agreement, in my opinion, and if time moves, he moves on without an agreement, i- if, if whenever he gets ready to build, if, you know, and comes with everything ready, then, then sign something. You're exactly right.
Yeah, and I guess, I, I'll be real clear, my, my motion is to table it next month for the council to consider it further. And hopefully we'll have some individuals here who can answer questions.
And I'll second your motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to say we've, uh, heard different stories, different times, the reason he can't, uh, get this thing completed or he can't get started, but yet the citizens are the ones that are suffering off this thing. We don't get, he need to address us. He need to address the council and the city.
You know, you know, in this agreement that the city signed with Mr. Hunt, it says in there that, that, that every quarter, he will make a report to the council on the progress of what's going on. I don't think we've seen, well, we've had a few reports, but, but, but they all wound up to be what Judge Judy calls puffing.
Yeah, and I, I'll just add that, you know, I, I've, I've visited with, uh, some individuals from the chamber and, and I, and I feel like Mr. Hunt, uh, intentions are sincere and I, I, I do believe that he's, uh, gonna do what he said he was gonna do. Don't wanna challenge that in any form or fashion, but I just feel like it would be prudent for the city to, to wait just a little bit, make sure that we're doing the right things.
I guess the only point I'll point legally is I don't believe, the agreement has been breached by Mr. Hunt, so with that said, just for purpose of legal clarity, I just wanted to add that.
That he has not?
No, no, because it says in the agreement that he has to commence a hundred and twenty days, uh, after the effective days of the lease agreement, uh, to construct it. There has been no lease agreement signed between each party, so there is no breach. You can look up and down you want, but that provision's never been triggered. Therefore, the agreement's still in place and not been breached.
Mayor, what happens tonight if we do table this till next month? What kind of jeopardy is it gonna put the situation in?
I don't know of any. I just, I don't remember discussing that with the banker or the, with him either one. He's, I mean, he's ready to get going.
I'm like some of the other council members...
Are we look, 'cause you, you're all aware there is no Plan B?
Yeah.
So are we still committed to this, or do we wanna just...
So, are we still committed to this, or do we want to just drop the whole thing and take our chances with it?
I don't think we need to go there right now.
No, I, I still think we need to give him a few more months, he's got till, what, October, November? So, I, I think we, there should be something happening in the next month or two.
Okay. Mr. Harville, you traveled a lot of miles today to come tonight, is this what you were gonna give us an update on your groups? And you're, you're, you're committed to that? If you would, step to the microphone so we can get it all recorded.
Said I traveled a lot of miles, and I was traveling miles working for you folks. And I went to, left Little Rock at seven o'clock yesterday morning. I went to a northeast city, I won't mention it where snow was all over the ground. Worked all day long, uh, yesterday. Left that northeast city at 6:00 AM this morning, which meant I got up at 3:00 AM your time. Came back to the state of Arkansas to work with the state on this particular project, and, and I'm here. So, if I go to sleep on you, I just go to sleep on you. But anyway, I will say this. I enjoyed doing it, and we were trying to work for the city of Russellville yesterday, all day long. I just wanted to mention one thing about convention centers, and I know this is a little off-base or whatever. I've been involved in these things, I guess, most of my career. And they are hard, hard, hard to do. I won't give you, now, I'm not getting, this is one angle of doing it, I'm gonna give you a couple, not a couple angles on how to do it, but some of the things that you go through in, in, in doing it. Back in 1980, I was running the Enid Oklahoma Chamber, we had no venue whatsoever for Oklahoma State Agencies, for Oklahoma Associations and all, to come to that town only 85 miles away and have, have meetings. So, we decided we needed a community center, convention center. We started working on it. We worked on it through a tax situation. We argued back and forth, and I understand that. I understand it, I understand it, I understand it. We felt so strongly that we needed this. So, they went ahead, the city went ahead and called the election, and my story is about what happened after they called the election. This was a community pretty well divided on this, and what I'm gonna tell you, it shows it's pretty well divided. The day of the election, it was about 10 degrees, it was colder in Enid, Oklahoma than it was where I was this morning. And they started, on the election day, I went in and visited with our employees, and I said, I'm not gonna make you do this, because it's cold. But we've been working on this thing, we know our town needs it. I suggested we lock the door, and we go door-to-door. By door-to-door, I meant door-to-door businesses, so we go and say, we get the votes and see what happens. And so, we did. When the election terms were in that day, we worked all day long. We won by 57 votes. Now, I thought that was an error of margin until one of my friends in Norman, Oklahoma, won something by eight votes. So, then I thought, well, gosh, we had a landslide on ours, didn't we? But I tell you that, say it's hard, it is hard, hard, hard. And when you have a controversy of any sort, y'all are discussing one element, I will tell you this, when we went to work, they're trying to get the All-Tell Arena, now Verizon Arena, and the expansion of the huge convention center, we worked 10 years on that. We lost three different times with elections that we had, and it was tough when you lost those, but the people spoke. We honored that, they spoke. The last time we lost, my employees, our office, the chamber office, looked like Election Central. And we went across the street to congratulate the people that had beaten us. And when I left to go over and do that, the employers were crying, they were, they just worked their hearts out to try to get that. Then, my wife and I went back over to the office, no one was there. We cleaned the office up, we put everything beside the elevators in that building, everything. And we'd been beat. It's not fun to get beat, as we all know. All of you sitting up here, one, because you're, or you wouldn't be sitting up there, you won. We stacked it all up by the elevator, cleaned up that office, ran vacuum cleaners all over there, and it looked like spick and span the next morning when the employees came in. I went home real early in the morning, I changed clothes, dressed, went back down there. I said, let's have a staff meeting. Had donuts for them, coffee and so forth. I said, you know, last night, there was an election, and it did come out quite like I wanted it, but I just want to tell you something, we are not losers, and we're gonna do it again. They said, not next month. I said, no, we're not gonna do it next month, because we spent half a million. My story is this, I know what you're dealing with, I understand what you're saying. They, when you get them, they are worth it, but they are hard to do and hard to win with different circumstances. Eldorado, Arkansas, built, I've been working down there since, they built a nice center. I don't really know the ways they did it, or what they did it, someone in this room may, but they didn't have anything to go to, they really didn't have a venue. And it is good, and it's really helped that city. When you get, when you get it, it really helps the center. Our organizations, both the Alliance and both the Chamber, uh, support postponing this for a while. Uh, so, I mean, not postponing this for a while, but giving him some sort of an extension, because it's tough to get it. See if he can do it, try it, see if he can do it, because you don't want to start all over. It's a tough deal to start off. You may end up having to do that, I don't know. But I wanted to talk to you, just tell you, they are great. We do not have a venue anywhere in this city for our state agencies to come with meetings, for state associations to come with meetings, well, we have a beautiful town and a beautiful setting out there, and they will come. This is a true story, you built it, the people I just mentioned, they will come. Some of them are mandated to meet in different cities all over the state, some of them are mandated that. Well, you gotta have a venue, if you don't have a venue, then they don't have to do that. Uh, but it's tough, it's a tough decision, it is a huge asset for your community once you get it. When you start looking around for venues to do things in, and like, if I wanted to go tomorrow and invite a group from Little Rock to have a three-day meeting here, I don't know exactly, you've got some places you can do it, I'm not saying you can't. But if you don't have something that would really, truly work, and once they start using it, it'll be just kind of like dominoes, they'll keep using it. And the other thing you have going for you with that is this, your geography, your geography is perfect for a center and groups like I just mentioned. So, I just hope that you hang in there, and I hope, I haven't met Mr. Hunt yet, I just told Alderman Harris over here that I have not missed him. I, I'd like to meet him, I want to meet him, I want to talk to him, I'm gonna do that. If you guys will keep me out of northeast, northeastern America, I'll be more than happy to do that. But it's good for you, they're hard, they are decisive, they are, they are controversial. I don't know of anyone that's ever done, what y'all are thinking about doing, without huge disagreements in every town. But once you do it, they're worth it. I have not heard anyone, since we won that thing finally in Little Rock and North Little Rock, I've not heard anyone say, boy, I wish we didn't have that. I've not heard, Freddie saw the one that I had in Enid, Oklahoma, that we did, and, and that little community of Enid, about 50,000 people. I still talk, I suppose, haven't heard anyone say, we wish we didn't have that anymore, but they're assets. That's my speech, I came to go to your party, Mayor, if you'll still let me.
Let's get there.
And then go home. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to table till next month, is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. All right, Mr. Westcott asked that you consider adding a late agenda item about solicitation in city right-of-ways. Mr. Westcott, how do you want to proceed?
Well, if we need a motion to, to add to the agenda tonight?
Yep.
Uh, due to the nature of this modified ordinance, especially here at the Christmas season, I move that this item be placed on tonight's agenda.
Okay, we've got a motion to accept a late agenda item.
Second.
Okay, we got a second, was Mr. Eaton? All right, you want to call the roll, it'll take six votes to add.
Five.
Five?
Five.
Okay, five votes.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Homan?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
No.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
No.
Mr. Freddie Harris?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
We got four votes yes and four votes no. Well, I don't see what it would hurt to take a couple more minutes and discuss it, so I'll vote no, uh, yes on that. Okay, so.
It's an ordinance, so.
Okay.
I move to suspend the rules and read by title only with a short explanation.
Second.
You don't have an ordinance. None, what is it? You don't say ordinance or a resolution? Oh, it is.
You want to take action tonight, or you just want to discuss?
Okay, ordinance, okay.
I wouldn't mind taking action if it's the will of the other council members to take action, but at the very least, I'd like to have this discussed tonight.
Good. So, where are we now? We've got a motion to suspend?
Right.
You need to, so we're getting the vote on that. All right, motion to suspend the rules, read one time by title only. Followed by a short explanation. You want to call the roll on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Mr. Wiley?
Wiley was no, is there a no down here? Mr. Harris is a no.
We need to call independently to find out if it needs the two-thirds requirement.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
No.
Mr. Richard Harris?
No.
Mr. Stuber?
Yes.
Mr. Freddie Harris?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Homan?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
No, it doesn't.
Takes two thirds?
Takes two thirds.
Most bills.
You can, yeah.
I want to vote yes if it makes a difference, will pass?
Yes.
Can, can you, can the mayor vote when there was not a tie?
Yes.
If it affects passage, the mayor, it's for the mayor to vote.
Okay, all right.
Okay, so. Discussion.
He's gonna read.
Trey's gotta read it first. Do you have something to add?
Yeah, actually, I do. An ordinance declaring the purpose and intent finds the solicitation, the right-of-ways of the city of Russellville, Arkansas, defines solicitation, providing solicitation, the right-of-ways of the city prescribed penalty, repealing ordinance number 2184 and for other purposes. This ordinance, the only difference between it and the one it's replacing, which is 2184, is instead of roadways, uh, it, and streets, it puts in right-of-ways, and it changed the definition from roadways and streets, and removed it and put in a right-of-way. Basically, this will expand the scope of the solicitation prohibition from the actual roadway within the city to the right-of-way of the city.
Okay. Yep, discussion.
So, that, that's the only difference is, is, is right-of-way versus roadway?
Yes.
Okay.
Why don't you fill us in on what prompted Mr. Westcott?
What prompted that for me, uh, is the commonality here lately of the number of professional panhandlers in the city of Russellville. In the year 2015, from November to November, there were 65 calls to the police department in relation to panhandlers, specifically panhandlers. From November to November 2016, from November 2015 to November 2016, that number almost doubled to 126 calls in regard to panhandlers in the city of Russellville. Now, that's just the number of people who made the calls. Now, some of those calls, I'm sure, were the same people, some of them were not. But it's more and more common here, as we look around our city, the number of people who are begging, uh, sitting on the side of the road with a sign of some sort, oftentimes in the very same place, day after day after day. The, my goal in this is not to interfere with anyone's right to ask for money, certainly not. But to require them to be further away from the curb. Where the old ordinance strictly was roadways and in the streets. They could stand right there at the curb. This requires them to be further away from traffic, it's a safety issue, number one. Other issues involved, without me having to go into great detail. So, if we don't pass this tonight, we at least need to talk about it, and consider doing something like this to protect the motorists, protect the people who are begging. That's my goal.
Can I come in?
Yes, Eric.
Well, I agree with what Eric is saying, but this ordinance, um, a couple of weeks ago, well, before the Christmas parade, we had a church group that wanted to pass out, they've done it in the past. They're, I'm sorry, I have a cold and I'm eating peppermint candy, thanks to Betsy. But in the past, they've gone through the crowd, and they've passed out their little sacks of goodies, and in it, they've included a scripture. And to me, December and Christmas is about, you know, Jesus. Everybody can believe what they want to believe. You know, December, and because of Jesus, it's our biggest economical month of the year, you know, pretty much supports the last quarter of the year. Money-wise, maybe even greater than that. But I hated it for the church to be, when they were told that they couldn't do it anymore, and if so, they were ticketed. Now, Eric tells me this doesn't affect this type of group, they're not soliciting. But I hate to see us get so far out here and that we, you know, cut off our nose and spite our face. I don't see anything wrong with the churches going along with the Christmas parade, passing out little literature, and it's not just the churches. So, as long as it doesn't include that sector of people, then, you know, this is soliciting, soliciting, these groups of people that I'm talking about were not soliciting, they were just spreading cheer and joy, and, and so I do not want this ordinance to affect those kinds of people. And yet, this, this ordinance was referenced in, to them as a reason why they couldn't go out and do those things.
If I'm not mistaken, this, this strictly applies to soliciting, for instance, in the first paragraph, uh, it says, whereas the city council of the city of Russellville finds it numerous persons, dot, 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 for the purpose of advertising or soliciting donations from the occupants of motor vehicles.
Well, it was used at, at the Christmas parade to tell them they couldn't do it.
I don't believe this one was, I believe it was an older one.
No, but it said nothing about it, though, Troy, I read that one in detail.
I know, but the one that seemed to be a good point of conversation was 1802, and that had been repealed by 2184. But the reference was to 1802.
Which was no longer valid, correct?
That is correct, as of two years ago.
Yeah.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to adopt. The motion was Mr. Westcott, second was Mr. Eaton.
Can I ask one more question before we move on? Will, will this affect what I just said?
Mr. Smith, that doesn't affect the Christmas parade at all, does it?
No, other than in a parade, though, people doing what you're saying that they would do can't enter into the roadway and join the parade.
Is the sidewalk, is the sidewalk considered right-of-way?
It is most of the time, but for, I'm just saying for the parade, they can't interfere with the parade as long as they're on the sidewalk and making, doing gifts or giving out gifts, then they're not gonna be in violation of this ordinance or the, or the special events
I guess, I guess my concern is if there's, if there's ambiguity in the ordinance at all that would restrict things of that nature, and now we're expanding the, uh, from roadways to right-of-ways, then we're just gonna make it more difficult on ourselves in the future unless we clarify the language to ensure that there's no misunderstanding going forward.
Again, I believe this is about solicitations, uh, asking for money and stuff versus just going and providing donations or gifts, so.
One, one thing bothers me is what if some of these guys, that's the only way that they've got to make a living, if they don't have nothing to eat, and they're out there, the, you know, and they're out there trying to get something to eat, and then you take this away from them, that's.
Oh, no, 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 and I'm not asking for that at all, I'm not asking to take away anyone's right to do that, and there's plenty of places around town. And there's plenty of places around town to do that, but I'm trying to move them further away from the street.
Well, I know the person you're talking about, I don't know him, I've seen him on the street out there. I mean, if you feel like giving him money, give him money. But, I mean, we just keep making rules and more rules and more rules and more rules, and the next thing you know, you're not gonna be able to do nothing. So, I, I'm, we got, we got a, we got rules in the, uh, in place for this right now.
Called question? Yes. Okay.
Second.
Got a second, would you call the question? Second, Mr. Eaton, we've got a motion to call the question in a second. You wanna just call the roll, Mr.? I think everybody's through.
Mr. Westcott?
Yes.
Mr. Eaton?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Holman?
Yes.
Mr. Wiley?
No.
Mr. Richard Harris?
Yes.
Mr. Stuber?
No.
Ms. Freddie Harris?
No.
How's it going? Motion carries.
Motion carries. All right then, with that done, we wish, uh, everybody a very happy holiday season, if you feel like celebrating it.
Make a most good journey.
You mind if I finish, Mr. Wiley?
No.
Those of you that are here, welcome to join us in the kitchen for a little reception, thank you.
Make a good journey.
We're adjourned.
Hey, Max!